Now I believe it's our last one. This is part A of 611, Presentation of Proclamation Designating May 4th, 2024, as Wildfire Community Preparedness Day in Lake County. Supervisor Pisca will take this.
We have a lot of partners in the room. If you want to come on up. CAL FIRE, you're a partner. Climate Officer, she's a partner. We do have our Social Services team that has helped with evacuations and sheltering.
Keep going, keep going.
Before we get started, I just want to show the vast variety of partners we have. And these are just the fraction, a fraction of NGOs and nonprofits, agencies, organizations that are all active in this work right now. Nine years ago was the year that started kind of everything in Lake County. That was 2015, changed the trajectory of many of our lives. And so many of you have made it your life work to make sure that our communities are no longer as vulnerable to wildfire. And that's really what this is about. And so I really thank you all for the work that you do every single day and for coming here today to show this collaboration, because it truly is a collaboration. And we were on many, many meetings every single month, working together through blue skies to continually make our communities safer. So, thank you. And this is a long one, because there's a lot here. The Board of Supervisors, County of Lake State of California, proclamation designating May 4th, 2024, as Wildfire Community Preparedness Day in Lake County. Whereas wildfire significantly impacts Lake County's environmental, economic, and social well-being and can occur any month. And whereas residents of Lake County's fire-prone communities must accept responsibility for living in high-fire hazard areas. And whereas residents, property owners, utility providers, evacuation corridor owners, and essential services providers must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management of vegetation and debris surrounding their locations and must stay continuously vigilant throughout the year. And whereas residents, citizens, and guests should take protective action immediately during a wildfire or any other emergency to keep themselves safe. And whereas Zone Zero is the ember-resistant zone which extends five feet from buildings and has been proven by science to be the most important of all defensible space zones and is designed to keep fire or embers from igniting materials that can spread fire to your home. And whereas using hardscape materials for landscaping, removal of all dead and dying vegetation, removing all branches within 10 feet of any chimney or stovepipe outlet, limiting combustible items on top of decks, relocating firewood and lumber to Zone Two, and replacing combustible fencing attached to the home and non-combustible alternatives are some examples of clearing Zone Zero. And whereas residents and property owners are requested to create 100 feet of defensible space, reduce fuels, have their address clearly posted, have a ready-for-wildfire, ready-set-go plan, prepare for extended periods without electricity. And whereas residents and property owners are required to follow Article 8 to Chapter 13 of the Lake County Code regarding hazardous vegetation and/or combustible material, which requires that defensible space protections are accomplished on those portions of unimproved parcels adjacent to improved parcels and along roadways. And whereas utility providers, phone, cable, fiber, electrical at all, are requested to create defensible space and remove all fuels within 100 feet of infrastructure stations, transmission line systems, earth-to-sky, and have their address clearly posted. And whereas evacuation and roadway corridor owners, federal, state, county, city, and private, are requested to create defensible space, lim up ladder fuels 10 feet, reduce and/or remove all fuels within 100 feet of roadways. And whereas essential services providers, hospitals, medical clinics, fire stations, police stations, government facilities, senior centers, care and shelter locations, are requested to create defensible space and reduce and/or remove all fuels within 100 feet of their infrastructure, have their address clearly posted, and prepare for extended periods without electricity. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors in partnership with the Lake County Fire Chiefs Association and the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority supports May 4th, 2024, as Wildfire Community Preparedness Day in Lake County. What you do makes a difference. Wildfire knows no season. Passed and adopted the 7th day of May, 2024. So this year, it's Wildfire Prevention Day or Preparedness Day. It used to be Wildfire Prevention Day, but we know that we cannot prevent wildfire. But we can work to prepare. And so I appreciate all of you, every single thing that you do. We are going to listen to a couple of the partners, because there's so much work happening in this space. When I think about what we were doing 10 years ago to where we are today, it is a major shift in culture and how we engage with each other and how we accept our responsibility in the private space, the public space, and how we work together and how we collaborate. So I'm just going to ask if anyone here has anything else to add.
Good morning, Board. Good morning, everyone. My name's Nick Widmer. I'm a manager for our Community Adaptation Program for the American Red Cross. And I just wanted to take this time to give a shout out to our community organizations active in disaster. I think that's, to your point of how we've worked together over the years, that's something that's really evolved. And we've seen that level of cooperation from public, private, our nonprofit partners, interested members of the community that are joining in and really getting into wildfire preparedness and how we can help our community. So again, a shout out to many members of the COAD that are present today.
So I'm Lori Hetson. I'm the Lake County Fire Safe Council Coordinator. And I've talked about it before, about the Defensible Space Assistance Program that we are currently working on to focus on people in the community that cannot do that work themselves for a myriad of reasons. We have over 100, we have about 100 on the list so far. We're continuing to do outreach, targeting those communities. It's open to everybody, but we're targeting underserved communities to try to get that work done, working with several of these partners to try to put together some workshops for the community for emergency evacuation for seniors, focusing on seniors, and a demonstration garden for defensible space as well, working with South Lake Fire Safe Council. We're trying to create something for that as well. So just to try to cover the gamut and get all the groups to focus on that defensible space specifically and evacuation.
Great. And Lori, well, thank you for sharing what you've been working on. But we also have really big news in capacity development. One of the things that we've been working towards for many, many years is how do we increase capacity in these organizations to actually get this work done that we have all known has been so needed over the years? Because we were looking at this just overwhelming amount of work that needed to happen. And Lori was the only employee for both the Fire Safe Council and the Resource Conservation District. So now, can you share some of the growth that's happening?
Okay, so we, currently we have several people that we've hired on as contractors, I guess. But we also just received a couple of different grants, the County Coordinator Grant for California Fire Safe Council, which will allow us to hire an executive director. And they will oversee both the RCD and the Fire Safe Council. So we have done some interviews. We are hoping to, we've extended an offer. We're hoping that that is going to be accepted soon and just going to continue growing that whole program as much as possible. We are also hoping that later today, maybe we will get a new contract, because the Fire Safe Council has been an ad hoc committee of the Board of Supervisors since its inception in 2009. And so we're hoping to make that a permanent program of the Resource Conservation District. Am I forgetting something?
This is massive work, really big work. So thank you.
Thank you for all of your support.
CAL FIRE, do you want to talk about Zone Zero a little bit? Because this is new-ish. A lot of people don't know about it. We've all been working on Zone 1 through 5 and out. But does someone want to come and talk about the science behind Zone Zero and the next thing we all need to do to harden our homes?
I can certainly try. Fire Apparatus Engineer Ganon Chapman. I'm with San Antonio Lake Napula Unit, assigned to the Clear Lake Oak Station on Highway 20. Those are my partners. They're all assigned there as well. Zone Zero is a new thing that just came out this year. Kind of the main goal of that is hardscape. So we're going to eliminate the mulch or the bark, 5 feet, 0 to 5 feet away from the structures. And that kind of assists with us, for us less having to do, clear the space around it. And then there's a lot of science. You can find YouTube videos on this regarding that said thing. Basically, the science behind it is the embers catch the mulch and the bark on fire and leads to the home catching on fire. And embers can last days, weeks, depending on what it is, it can last for quite a while. So it's a new thing. We're kind of pushing it hard here in Lake County. But yeah, 0 to 5 feet is new Zone Zero.
And there's some really compelling videos on Ready, Set, Go. I think that's where the videos are, showing two structures next to each other where one of them has Zone Zero and one of them doesn't, and how quickly the ignition takes place. So this is just, it's really, really important. And you can be like me, this spring, digging up all of your plants that you thought would be looking really nice next to your house, but now they need to be moved to a safer place further away. And so we know, we live in the wooie, we live really far out sometimes from our service providers, and your house has to be able to survive on its own, really does. That's part of the responsibility of living here. So this is a relatively simple thing that each of us can do. So I encourage you all to take a walk around your perimeter and see what you can move further away. That's a really good start. You can also do hardscaping. There's a lot more that Deanna maybe can touch on with the Home Hardening Program, because that is one of the requirements of the program as well.
Hi, everybody. My name is Deanna Frenaway. I work for North Coast Opportunities. And we've recently had the pleasure of taking on a grant in home hardening. And this partnership is with CalOES, FEMA, and the County of Lake. So we just got underway on our first home. And some of the measures that we will be focusing on is making sure that we have at least 2 feet of non-combustible siding on the bottom of your home, on top of the deck, under the deck, enclosing the deck with an ember-resistant material. We will be doing hardscaping and clearing that zero zone, making sure that all the plants are taken away, hardscaping, replacing mulch and bark with rock. We will be working on gutters, making sure they're non-combustible and they have gutter covers, so embers aren't flying into your gutters and then catching your roof on fire. There's a multitude of things that you can do for your home that are free and cheap, little bit of manual labor, but definitely worth it for your home and your neighbor's home and the community as a whole.
So Deanna mentioned the first house got underway. This is the first house in the state, this state, for all of the pilot programs. And that is because Deanna's crew and NCO have been so diligent over the past two years. So, thank you. Congratulations, really awesome. And then you also mentioned that hardening your home protects your neighbor's home. And so now we're moving into the area of cluster hardening, which is what the whole pilot program in the Kelseyville Riviera is about. Because we know that one house can become an ignition source, and it can continue through the rest of the neighborhood. So we've got to focus on cluster hardening, and that is making sure that the entire community is hardened. And so that's what this big project is all about. And so it's really important to do your part for the rest of your neighborhood. Okay, Magdalena, did you want to say something?
My name is Magdalena Valdarama, and I'm the Program's Director for the Siegler Springs Community Redevelopment Association. We're a tiny little nonprofit, but we're very proud to be part, have all these partners with, working together, because if anything, we learned from the fire is we love our land, we love our water, and fire can be a very good partner in keeping that land and water beautiful. It also showed us that what will make a difference is the relationships that we have to the land and the relationships that we have with all of the people, all of the cultures that live here. I happen to also be the Community Regional Firewise Community Coordinator, working with CAL FIRE, the Northern Region. And we promote the cluster hardening. I didn't know that term until today, so that all communities, it doesn't matter that only one of you is doing it, you all have to do it. We all have to do it together. Fire doesn't know any political boundaries, it doesn't know any cultural boundaries. So we can make our, we can keep weaving our communities together and make them as, Lake County, as strong and beautiful as the Poma baskets of the folks here who steward this land and whose bounty we still enjoy.
We do not have a representative from TARA here today, because I think they're out in the field working. This is Tribal Eco Restoration Alliance, who also does an incredible amount of work. Tomorrow, they are doing a burn in the Cobb area. It is said that all of California will burn at one point. It is up to us what that fire looks like. And so putting good fire on the ground is our choice and our responsibility and our stewardship. So you will see fires going throughout the year. This is something that we have to get reaccustomed to, because this is something that's happened for thousands of years. This is what the landscape needs and requires. And we do have a lot of trauma from wildfires in our counties, in our county and surrounding counties. And so a lot of times, people have a really, an emotional response to seeing smoke. But we have to move away from that. We have to get used to seeing it year-round. And you will start to see it more year-round with TARA doing their projects. So I just want to give them a big shout-out. With the Workforce Alliance, we're doing a big investment in trying to get more funding and more workforce development, because that has been another big push that we've all been working on over the years, is we know we have this massive amount of work, we don't know who's going to do it. So we don't have our Hogback Ridge Crew Representatives here either. But that is Chief Siancio in the North Shore Fire Districts. Big project over the last couple of years is bringing on staff who are trained to do this work year-round and also have their Fire FIRE 1 certificate, so that they can assist CAL FIRE and our local departments with cleanup during the fire season. And then we don't have Clerk here either, but Clerk is bringing in many, many millions of dollars each year to focus on our Community Wildfire Protection Plan priorities. And so as a lot of you know, we finally got that passed and adopted this fall. So we have our priorities, we have our roadmap, we have our team, and everybody is working on this together. Is there anybody that I missed that would like to add something? Oh, of course, Tammy, from the community side.
Hi, Tammy Alexey, North Coast Opportunities. And I run a project called EPIC, Emergency Preparedness in Communities. Currently, we have our Neighbor Fest events going. They are a block party to promote preparedness that we're doing. With that event, we do a fire drill for the kids. So I have to explain this a little more, just because it's so cool. We set up some cots, we have the kids lay down on the cots and put some goggles on that are darkened out. We push the smoke detector, have them run through a jumpy house obstacle course, and meet their parents on the other spot at the meeting spot. This is, does a lot of reinforcement. It gets those kids as young as like 1 or 2 to think about when that button is pushed, that alarm sounds, that they have to get to the meeting spot. Of course, they have fun doing it. It gets the parents to meet them at the meeting spot and then to also reinforce that they need to practice at home during the evening. We also detabling at those events and, I forgot, I forgot your lunch. I brought you guys lunch. I brought some MREs for them supervisors for lunch. We do an activity at these events that we make the MREs and let people try them. Hopefully, we have enough to let them take one home also. We also just did a Love Where You Live, Lake Unites Volunteers, Love Where You Live, Live Where You Love. It was a volunteer fair to get more of these agencies' volunteers, also the COAD, which Nick mentioned. And then we have a California Emergency Response Corps team. They are here, well, the majority of them. We have one missing today. And they'll tell you a little about some of the other stuff that we're doing, if that's okay. Who wants to go first?
Amanda Jo, I'm on the CIRC team, California Emergency Response Corps. We do a lot of stuff. So recently, we helped the Family Resource Center in Ukiah pack about 400 bags for families in need. We also assist the Redwood Coast Regional Center to provide go-bags to select organizations to better prepare access and functional need clients to be prepared and more educated in case of a disaster.
Hi, I'm Amanda Collins. I'm a second-year CIRC member. I kind of have it written out, because I got a lot of stuff to say. So one thing we do is we do a day of service on Martin Luther King Jr. Day. This is a day of service where AmeriCorps and NCC was actually there with us this year. And we helped the systems caring for Clear Lake do a cleanup on Sulphur Bank and throughout the main arteries of Clear Lake. And then we also participated in a unity event at the Methodist Church. We also partner with Red Cross closely, where we have the opportunity to be trained in a lot of different things, like hands-only CPR, where we teach compression-first, compression-only CPR, in order to save a life until the paramedics get there. And then we also do the Pillow Case Project with the Red Cross, which teaches 3rd to 5th graders how to pack a go-bag in the event that they're evacuated. So we go into schools, and we do a whole group training with them and go over it. We give them this pillowcase, they get to decorate it and put in different items when they get home for their go-bag. We also do a Prepare Pedro for the K through 2nd graders, which is a story that we tell the kids about Pedro the Penguin, and kind of introduce them to the idea of being evacuated and having to get out of their home and get out fast when that alarm sounds. We also are partnered up with the County Planning Department, doing the 2050 small group facilitation during the general plan and local area plan town hall meetings. And we also are completing surveys, which we are trying to get 1,000, I think, we have like 500 or about, just over 500. Our goal is 1,000 surveys to be completed for the 2050 survey. So if you haven't completed, please do so at 2050, what is the website? LakeCounty2050.org.
Hi, I'm Dawn Kennedy, and I'm first-year AmeriCorps California Emergency Response Corps. And we have been working to do mitigation up in Bottle Rock area, and we're working with Spring Valley as well and Cobb Fire Safe Committee to get that mitigation all cleaned up, so that we can not have fires like we did before.
And I'm Pamela Coleman. This is my first term with CIRC. And thanks to NCO and CIRC, I got my traffic flagger certification.
So the traffic flagger certification was something that came from the Hogback Crew or from Chief Siancio. He requested flaggers. Nobody was certified in the county to come and help them out. So we said, that's a need. We've done two classes so far, and we hope to do another. And then last but not least, we have my coworker, Dennis Burke, who will talk on CIRC.
Good morning, everybody. It's still morning, right? Yeah. My name is Dennis Burke. I'm a project coordinator for North Coast Opportunities. I work in the disaster response programs with Tammy, most of the programs that were already mentioned here. One of my main hats that I wear is the CIRC program, Community Emergency Response Team. It's a federal program overseen by FEMA. And at this time, it is worked through with North Coast Opportunities, oversees a program in both Lake and Mendocino Counties. CIRC team members are trained, they go first through a basic training, then through a FEMA course training, and the training continues. They take an oath, disaster service worker oath eventually, and can be deployed during times of disasters. So they are not first responders, but we are trained to work with first responders in our communities during times of disasters. We have other programs that we are working on too. Tammy mentioned our flaggers training course, which many of our members are a part of. We go through a home assessment training program, so we can go out and assess homes in different areas. And we're also working with different animal projects around Lake County, animal preparedness and evacuation. And we're also currently working with our local fire departments to help them with the Reflect to Protect program, to make your addresses much more visible for the first responders. And it looks like we're going to be meeting soon here with our Fire Chiefs Association to maybe have our CIRC team members take on the job of putting these signs up for them.
So you heard a little bit about a collaboration happening with the county department. So we don't have up here with us right now, our Public Works Department, but Public Works and Director DeLeon partnered for the last two years with the Canocte Fire Safe Council to finish up the evacuation project of the Soda Bay Corridor and purchased the masticators, which are out on the roadsides, chewing up all that vegetation to make our evacuation routes safer. And then the biggest investment that we've had lately is our climate adaptation, our Chief Climate Resiliency Officer slash Tribal Liaison. And this was a position that we so desperately needed, because, again, we saw the need for all this work to happen, but we had no capacity to write grants and monitor grants and also act as a liaison to other departments. And so Terry's been with us for about a year and almost a half, and bringing in a lot of the funding that we've been talking about here, working as an ambassador and a partner with all of the other agencies. So I will just pass it to you, Terry.
Thank you again, Terry Logston, Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and Tribal Liaison. And it's my pleasure to work with all of these professionals. I've worked in the community for quite some time. I have worked with NCO in the past. I've worked with other tribal nations. And so to bring that work together, I think of myself in doing this work as almost like a weaver, although I'm not a weaver. But I'm bringing together what I learned from these different meetings and what they're doing in their different departments and organizations and connect them, and then bring ideas and bring people together to write grants to support the work that we need done in Lake County.
And then we also have the Chair of the Risk Reduction Authority. If you'd like to say anything. Supervisor Simon?
Obviously, all the collaboration that happens in Lake County, you just continue to see it grow. And I know we've been taking small steps since nine years ago to really make some advances. So all I can say is thank you to everybody that has been at all of the meetings, all the collaborative efforts, the only CMAT that has ever taken place in California's history. I want to thank Magdalena and everybody who helped bring that to fruition. But I just want to thank everybody who does this hard work every year. Everybody is collaborating through the RRA, every tribal nation, every government in the county, every, you know, government organization. We just continue that collaboration, and we're going to be okay. The other thing I want to say too is, everyone has to do their own part, but doing it responsibly. Every year, we have someone cutting grass in the afternoon that creates a spark and then trying to do the right thing at the right time is always a challenge. So I just want to So I just want to thank everybody for the support and the hard work. Let's hope we meet like this, not in shelters as we move forward. So we'll continue the hard work that needs to be done. Thank you.
So I'll just end by saying that we have allowed the experiences of 7 years of fires and 2/3 of our county burning to literally transform us. And it's hard, and it's been difficult, and often unpleasant and traumatic. But here we are, here we are all today. And the work that we've been building on year after year is going to continue thanks to all of you.
Anything further, Supervisor Green?
If I could just add a couple, yeah, don't run away from the photo op.
They're actually pretty good. You should try them.
I want to thank everyone here. I'm MREs, please. This is an amazing display. Supervisor Pisca, I watched you rattle these off with just amazing recall. And even you were struggling to get all the acronyms and the agencies that have been driving this effort. This is a much different landscape from 2015. And I want to thank Supervisor Simon and Pisca for their hard work on the Risk Reduction Authority and developing not just the mosaic here that you see, but also developing the wisdom and the expertise on this board to provide some leadership and some funding avenues and the creation of our Climate Resiliency Officer. These things don't happen in a vacuum. So I want to thank, again, the very hard work of Supervisor Pisca and Simon on this. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things I didn't hear in the Zone Zero. I have to channel my chief rights. Those attic vents and those subspaces, you need to get some screening on that. So those embers, even if you clear all the vegetation out of Zone Zero, you need to make sure those embers don't get inside your house. I do have a reflective sign. I haven't installed it yet. I'm supposed to have a go-bag, and I don't have one. So if there's one thing, it's great to see all this if only because some of our newer residents and even those that were here during that series of wildfires may have relaxed by necessity. You know, we've had a couple decent fire seasons, but of course, we have high fuel loads this year, and we don't know what's going to happen. So I appreciate very much everything that you've done here, this great team. But I know I still have work to do to harden my own home. And I encourage those in the community who, you know, who know, it's a struggle to stay on top of this. I had a constituent reach out to me, and I gladly handed it over to Supervisor Pisca, and she was on it. I saw that same constituent the next day, and she was so pleased to have the resources that were made available to her. Thank you, thank you all.